God, you have chosen us, thy children, and you are concerned about us, dear Lord. The Lord, dear Lord, wants to give thy word unto us so that we can grow in thy word, dear Lord, spiritually, dear Lord. We also thank thee, dear Lord, we praise thee, dear Lord. You enabled, dear Lord, these meetings, dear Lord, to take place because this was thy plan for us, dear Lord, even before the foundation of the earth was laid, dear Lord. Yes, Lord, you know our needs, you know our shortcomings, you know us, dear Lord, and what are all our requirements, and we know, dear Lord. You are the Lord, dear Lord, who has arranged these meetings, dear Lord, to meet, dear Lord, all our requirements, dear Lord, for we know, dear Lord, that we need to be revived, and you have given us these meetings, dear Lord, so that we are revived in the Spirit, dear Lord. Yes, Lord, wonderful God, we thank thee, dear Lord, in the circumstances, dear Lord, which were indicating, dear Lord, that there would be no meetings, dear Lord, because the speakers were not coming, but dear Lord, you enabled, dear Lord, these meetings to take place, dear Lord, for we know, you have heard the prayers of everyone of us, dear Lord, from more than a month's time, dear Lord, in your answered prayers, dear Lord. Wonderful God, we also thank thee, we praise thee, dear Lord, for the faith that you have given unto this, dear Lord, unto all the elders of the assembly, and also, dear Lord, to the Lord, all those believers in this house, dear Lord, when they prayed on this fence day, dear Lord, that you have not, dear Lord, I am disappointed as, dear Lord. Dear Lord, we thank thee, we praise thee, dear Lord, for we know, dear Lord, thy presence is here, and we know that, dear Lord, you have already got a message for us, dear Lord. We pray, dear Lord, for Brother Alan, dear Lord, who would be coming here, dear Lord, to share thy word, dear Lord. Wonderful God, you have used him wonderfully yesterday, dear Lord, and you have spoken to us, dear Lord. We also thank thee, dear Lord, for Brother Ryder Kumar, dear Lord, who shared thy word and who has exalted us, dear Lord, as to how we should, dear Lord, live, dear Lord, a life which is acceptable unto thee, dear Lord. So many shortcomings, dear Lord, he has exposed in us, so that, dear Lord, we can correct ourselves, dear Lord. He asked, dear Lord, once again, dear Lord, today, to talk to us, dear Lord, for you have spoken to us about faith, dear Lord. Yesterday, you have strengthened in thy faith, dear Lord, in such a wonderful way, dear Lord. We ask thee, dear Lord, to continue to speak to us today, so that, dear Lord, all those who come here, dear Lord, are able to leave this place, dear Lord, fully satisfied that you have spoken unto us, dear Lord. Wonderful God, we, dear Lord, we ask thee, dear Lord, to bring thy children, dear Lord, whom you are appointed to come here today and to listen thy word, dear Lord, to bring them on time, dear Lord, so that when they come here, Lord, they are able to not only hear thy word, but able to spiritually grow in, dear Lord, for we know, dear Lord, you know, dear Lord, that there are so many of us, dear Lord, who still need to give their lives unto thee. So many of us, dear Lord, have been backslidden, dear Lord. So many of us, dear Lord, still have to grow in thee. We ask thee, dear Lord, to give, dear Lord, we ask thee, dear Lord, to use this opportunity, dear Lord, to give us the word, dear Lord, which will enable us, those who do not know about thee, dear Lord, to come to know about thee, and, dear Lord, give their lives unto thee, dear Lord. We also pray, dear Lord, and ask thee, dear Lord, to be, dear Lord, with those who are backslidden especially, so that, dear Lord, they are able to be revived, dear Lord. We pray for those who are in thee, dear Lord, able to grow in thee, because thy word, dear Lord, always has sufficient food, dear Lord, spiritual food, dear Lord, for growth, dear Lord. We ask thee, dear Lord, to talk to us, dear Lord. Wonderful God, mighty God, you are the Lord, who not only hears our prayers, not only answers, but also talks to us, dear Lord. We ask thee, dear Lord, to take charge of this meeting into the hands, dear Lord, totally, dear Lord, so that everyone, dear Lord, here is able to hear thy word and, dear Lord, able to be, dear Lord, revived fully in thee, dear Lord. We also pray, dear Lord, and ask you to be with those who are playing their music and also those who are singing, dear Lord, also those who are in charge of the audio and also video. Dear Lord, I ask you to be with each and every one of them, so that they are all able to, dear Lord, perfectly and meticulously, dear Lord, able to, dear Lord, do thy work in this place, so that, dear Lord, thy name is glorified, dear Lord. Wonderful God, we, once again, dear Lord, commit Brother Alan, Jen into the hands, so that, dear Lord, we are able to, dear Lord, hear the word, dear Lord. Wonderful God, we thank thee for all these things, in the precious name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Shall we sing song number one from the sheets? Parta sankya okati. Nena padna partla netlo karanichanaal badukundam irujju. Parta sankya okati, modatti charanam, aakar charanam. Sarvona ta sthalam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Sarvona thundagudavi sevakulai yudhi. Sarvona thundagudavi sevakulai yudhi. Sarvona thunichitambunam sarvadasutim chedabu. Sarvona thunichitambunam sarvadasutim chedabu. Sarvona ta sthalam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Paraloka hero shale punam parishutula sangambu. Parishutapathan bandhuram prabhu esupistundu. Sarvona ta sthalam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Sivalomarani chenu sri esunakoraku. Banamichunu parishutulaku halleluja paadebhu. Banamichunu parishutulaku halleluja paadebhu. Sarvona ta sthalam bulo devuni ke mahima. Sarvadikari esuni siluvaache kalige. Parta sankya rendu, modatti aakar charanam. Parta sankya rendu, modatti renda, modatti ka aakar charanam. Neeli gaganana velige tarana boli lokana velugudam. Madura swarampu akshula boli esunake stuti paadedam. Madura swarampu akshula boli esunake stuti paadedam. Puvula paramalam pulalla tootalo vyapinchunathlugam. Puvula paramalam pulalla tootalo vyapinchunathlugam. Puvika thoda lokamaniri tootalo paramalam neepuvu. Puvika thoda lokamaniri tootalo paramalam neepuvu. Neeli gaganana velige tarana boli lokana velugudam. Madura swarampu bhaktu boli esunake stuti paadedam. Madura swarampu akshula boli esunake stuti paadedam. Deepa muna taylamunna kaalam deepa mundanna vattimanndun. Deepa muna taylamunna antakaalam deepa monanduna vattinundun. Irudhivilona jivinchukaalam vyapimpajyu boesunamam. Irudhivilona jivinchukaalam vyapimpajyu boesunamam. Neeli gaganana velige tarana boli lokana velugudam. Madura swarampu akshula boli esunake stuti paadedam. Madura swarampu akshula boli esunake stuti paadedam. Parta sankya moodu, modatti moodu, aadichanaal badukundam. Parta sankya moodu, modatti moodu, aadichanaal. Song number three, first, third and fifth. Songshish lekutaksa chenleptai, kistibujasa, songshish andegruna. Leva, songshish. Paralokame na swasthyemu eppudu gaantuno. Paralokame na swasthyemu eppudu gaantuno. Na priyayesuni nenepudu gaantuno. Na priyayesuni nenepudu gaantuno. Paralokame na swasthyemu eppudu gaantuno. Paralokame na swasthyemu eppudu gaantuno. Akalita pulidukkamu manoveedana ledachata. Akalita pulidukkamu manoveedana ledachata. Paramama kutamupundanu prabhu padamulacheredanu. Paramama kutamupundanu prabhu padamulacheredanu. Paralokame na swasthyemu eppudu gaantuno. Paralokame na swasthyemu eppudu gaantuno. Na parugutugamuttimpa naaku krupanunduganusagunu. Na parugutugamuttimpa naaku krupanumenduganusagunu. Paralokame na swasthyemu eppudu gaantuno. Paralokame na swasthyemu eppudu gaantuno. Priyuni pillupunu vini nenukuda sitapadhanu. Priyuni pillupunu vini nenukuda sitapadhanu. Dina monosamlichaga. Dinamulu samipichaga Vaanchayu adikambaye Dinamulu samipichaga Vaanchayu adikambaye Paralokame na swasthyemu Eppudu gaantuno Paralokame na swasthyemu Eppudu gaantuno Na priya esuni Neleppudu gaantuno Na priya esuni Neleppudu gaantuno Paralokame na swasthyemu Eppudu gaantuno Paralokame na swasthyemu Eppudu gaantuno
Parta sanki nalgu Ayidu ayid chernalu Parta sanki nalgu ayidu ayid chernalu Sare ayidu parta partu Parta sanki ayidu modeti chernalu Parta sanki ayidu modeti chernalu Sare parta minandi Ochnavalu kalsipadu
Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay Paulaina ke faina Apostolaina lokamaina Paulaina ke faina Apostolaina lokamaina Oh navii mari eviaina Oh navii mari evi Sarva mulu meevayga
Kalsipadu Rendu chernalu obita sarosnadi
Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay Paulaina ke faina Apostolaina lokamaina Paulaina ke faina Apostolaina lokamaina Oh navii mari eviaina Sarva mulu meevayga Sarva mulu meevayga Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay Jeeva faina nu maranamaina Jeeva faina nu maranamaina Abobu navii aina nu Sarva mulu meevayga Sarva mulu meevayga Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay
Sorry partil start justa miri badala Versa chernu Start and leave it only you should sing Hmm chalana Partani kiti baran
Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay Paulaina ke faina Apostolaina lokamaina Paulaina ke faina Apostolaina lokamaina Oh navii mari eviaina Oh navii mari evi Sarva mulu meevayga Sarva mulu meevayga Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay Sarva shaktuni vaakui diye Sarva mulu meevay Devuni sarva mulu meevay
Very good Bhaiil palavadu
The grand old book The grand old book You find the words of comfort Wherever you may look And so reward and peace Is promises So keep on believing in the grand old book Asre stamvam krantamulo He chota chuchina Adardayunnadi Sukadukkamulo Vakdhanamunna di Visvasamuchidya inchuri
Good morning once again Good morning Good to see you, second day of your conference
Padi prateka sama marii kudi kallo rendu dinam pochamu
All of you look very fresh
Anta guda chala taja ga ganbarthunaru
And I look forward to our time together in God's Word
Sabati devuni vaakimutu miyandaruto guda samay gada palani chustunam
It's very encouraging to see you lift your Bibles up And give glory to God for His Word
Sabati devuni vaakimana ga Bible ni pay ketti devuni Mayam parchu parta parta chudanu
I'm more from a old school Old school Old background
Neen guda pahata kalam manchene
I like it to carry my Bible
Neen guda na Bible ni Aridanga chetha padkodamu
I know the new generation has the Bible in a smartphone
Ivalri apunna Motta taram variki smartphone la untadu Bible
And that's okay No problem But I like this book
Kalinakai te i posta kamandastam
So yes, as we open God's Word this morning I invite you to turn to the book of First Peter First Peter
Sabati yudekaalasamlo manu Bible no manamu teruchundaga modeti peethuru mei Bible tiyala ne korthunam
Yesterday we looked at the book of James
Neeridinamo manamu Yakobu Posta kanachustam
Today we're looking at First Peter, chapter one
Iroju peethurashma mati patrika modeti ajham chustam
As you know, James, First and Second Peter The Book of Hebrews and the Book of Jude are called General Epistles
Kabati manu kandarka telesinade marii Yakob patrika Marii Yudha patrika Peethur patrikvi ni guda marii saadharnamayna patrikalga pilishtam
General in a sense that it's given out to the church
Aga sanghaaniki saadharnamga ayubadina patrikalga vitni bhaavistar
So this morning We are going to look at First Peter, chapter one
Kabati yudekaalasamlo manamu modeti peethuru modeti ajham chustam
And we're gonna look at the subject of hope
Nirikshana ane amsha ne chudabhotunam
Yesterday we looked at the subject of faith
Neeridinamlo manamu visvasamana amsha ne chuskunam
And as we look at the subject of hope Later, we're gonna look at the subject of love
Kabati iroju manamu marii nirikshana ane amsha ne chustundaga Prema ane amsha ne guda manu kon sagista
So you have faith
Mei visvasamundi
Hope
Nirikshanundi
Love
Premaundi
All three abide
Kabati i mooru nilichunavi
But the greatest is love
Aite vietilo gopade entendi Prema
Let's pray together
Rendu kalsipraan cheskuta
Father, we come before you
Tanri meyumisana dikostunam
We acknowledge that you are the true and living God
Prabha niu nijamayna jiumgaladheyudavani meyamappukuntunam
And that your son, the Lord Jesus Christ, is Savior
Ni kumarudu prabha esu kristuma rakshakudu
So we ask that you open our eyes to see
Kabati mimuna chututaku ma karunu terovani korthunam
Open our ears to hear
Prabha vinutaku ma chulenu guda terovani korthunam
Open our hearts to receive
Prabha ninu pundukunutaku ma hurudemun teravani korthunam
Your word this morning
Prabha yudekaalam niu vaakimudvara i karam chen
Feed us, we pray
Prabha mamlimir pooshinchamani pradhistunam
Satisfy our thirst
Prabha ma dappikanu tirchamani pradhistunam
Because you are the God who will meet us in our needs
Elena ga ma akarli tirchay devudavu niwe
We ask it in Jesus' name
Esu kristunam manu pradhistunam tanri
Amen I read somewhere that a person can live for forty days without food
Marii aharamulekunda oka vekti nalupai dinamalu undagaludani oka dagar chadivan
Four days without water
Neelu lekunda nalugu rojalu
Four minutes without air
Gali lekunda nalugu nimshalu
But only four seconds without hope
Aite nirikshana lekunda kevalam nalukshanalanta
Whether that's true or not
Adi nijamagado telidigani
I think it's something to think about
Kalin danu gunchikodiga alo chinchali ani naudesham
And today, people often turn inward to find hope
Irojilochustey marii nirikshana koruku tamunutama chustundunari dinallo
Especially living here in Asia Where people think everything is from the inside of us To find answers in life
Visheshamga marii aasha kandamulunde manamu guda amne veman putamante Manalu manaku ekkado nirikshana aasha anadi kanvisnan putam
But you know, the more you go inside, the more you become frustrated
Aite manu chusadlaite manu antaga manu loopalikachustamo Antaga manu vesari potam visikipotam
Because hope is not found from within Rather, it's found from above and from a person
Sarendi nirikshana anadi manu loopata kanipichadi kadu Adi payunundi kachadi adi velupatunundi kanabadadi
This morning, as my driver, Sanu, was talking with me He was sharing about many people Who have passed away over the last two years In his family and among his relatives
Yudekaalasamlo marii nanu tiskochina Marii driver saudarudu sunilu Marii gata samatsrallo marii tanu kolpaina priyala gunchi Elavarundar marinichadu ai punchkunta unnanato
But we need to realize that we are living In the land of the dying Going to the land of the living
Kabati manu gamanchalsa vishum entente Mruutulla deshamu nundi Saajivala deshamu lo nikumam prayanamayeltunam Aga manu mruutulla deshamu lo unttunam Kalin manu prayanavemo saajivala desham byipu
That's hope
Adi nirikshana
But people around us think that we are living in the land of what? The living headed for the land of the dying
Aite manu chuttunavari noksar gamanchichurendi vallem ankuntaru Saajivala deshamu lo nundi Mruutulla deshamu nikumam prayanamayutunam ankuntundarval
That's no hope
Adi nirikshana kadu
The Bible tells us That we are living in the land of the dying Going to the land of the living
Chanipotunnavaru leda mruutulla utunnavari deshamu lo nundi Manamu saajivala deshamu nikumam prayanamabutunam adhe parashutram chaptamnde
And that's why we have a sense of triumph and victory
Andi ketchurendi manaku vijayamu leda manaku jayamu anna bhavana kalugutamnde
Yesterday's subject of faith Today's subject of hope are interconnected
Kabati ninatti amshamu visvasamu iroju oka amshamu Nirikshana rendu guda yudidi unnae kalisunnae
Hebrews, chapter 11, verse 1 says this
Hebeelagraashpatrika padakondachay murtu asnu ilag chaptamnde
Now, faith is the assurance of things hoped for And the conviction of the things not seen
Visvasamunna nadi nirikshimpabadu aatiyoka nija soruba manu Adrushamayna vi yunnavanutaku rujuvanayunadi
So as we look at the subject of hope It is a truth from the beginning of the Bible to the end of the Bible
Kabati nirikshana ane yamsha manu chustundaga Parashuddhargandam adinundi aaramham varuku idhi satyamayunadi
So that hope is from God and from God's Word
Kabati i nirikshana nadi devu nundi Devuni vaakimulonundi vachinadi
So let's look at First Peter, chapter one
Modeti peethuru murtu ajham chustam
And we're gonna look from verses 3 down to verse 12
Moodavachunchi pannandavachnumvarukum chustundam Peethurashma mati patrika murtu ajham
Yeah
Moodavachunchi pannandu varukku marii marchi marcha chuntamandi moodu nalgu terila kalisunnae Mana prabhuvagu esu kristu tenriaina devudustutimpa badanuka Mruutulla lo nundi esu kristu tirile chutavala Jiumutukudina nirikshana manaku kalugunatlu Aaya akshayamaynadiyu nirmalamaynadiyu vaada bharani Bharani diyu naina Swasthyamanu kalugunatlu Aaya thana visheshakani kramu choppuna maralano marala janmimpa chesenu Chal Kalamandu balpatsvadu sidhamugana rakshana nikalugunat Swasthyamadaradheyam shaktichad Apadbadu meekor ni swasthyam parugunu badraparachabadiyunadi Aaravachnum indu valana miru mikkili anandinchuchunaru Kalin avushruvunubetti naanavidamulaina shodhanachata Prastutamuna konchamu kaalam meeku dukkamu kaluguchunadi Shichposurunam agni parikshaluna shuddipatsvadu chunadi Danikantia mulamana me visvasam Ie shodhanachata parikshakunilchindai Esu kristu pradekshamadu meyam meppunu mahima yugana tay Kalugunatlu karanamagunu Eniditamiditalkalu kalisnandi miraaya nu chudaka poyinano Aaya nu preminchunaru Ipudu aaya nu kanulavara chudaka e visvasinchuchu Me visvasamunaku falamunu Aga aatma rakshanu punduchu Chapanashakki munu mahima yuktamu naina santosham galavari anandinchuchunaru Kalu aakrupanu guts pravachinchina pravaktala iri rakshanu guts Parishilinchu Amen dunnakristu aatma kristu vishemi Samalagutsu vartaravata kaligabo mahiranu gutsu munduga
Amen. God, Peter, who's the author of the book of 1 Peter,
writes from a heart of a pastor. I'm very excited to meet you.
And he's trying to pasture his people during difficult times.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Christians in those days were misunderstood.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And because of that, many were subject to cruel treatment.
I'm very excited to meet you.
They were being rejected.
I'm very excited to meet you.
They were being persecuted.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Very similar to the book of James from yesterday.
I'm very excited to meet you.
In 1 Peter, suffering is mentioned 12 times through the book.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And the word submit is mentioned 6 times.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Okay, and some of the suffering that was experienced by Christians came from the government.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And so, how are we to live?
How do we live?
We submit.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And we do good.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And the idea of doing good is mentioned 6 times in the book of 1 Peter.
I'm very excited to meet you.
So, 1 Peter is very similar to the book of James.
I'm very excited to meet you.
There were trials and difficulty.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And God uses it to form or shape one's faith in Christ.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Here, the subject is hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And what does it say in verse 3?
I'm very excited to meet you.
God has what? Calls us to be born again to a living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And that's the first point from verses 3 to 5.
I'm very excited to meet you.
We have been born again to a living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
The subject of hope in the book of 1 Peter is mentioned no less than 5 times.
I'm very excited to meet you.
It's mentioned in verse 3, living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And then it's said again in verse 13.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Set your hope fully on the grace that will be brought to you at the revelation of Jesus Christ.
I'm very excited to meet you.
So, he gives us a description of this living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
It is, first he says, "You are born again."
I'm very excited to meet you.
And when you think of being born again, it takes you back to John, chapter 3.
I'm very excited to meet you.
How do you get to into the kingdom of God?
I'm very excited to meet you.
You need to be born again.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Just as many of you as children were born into your family.
I'm very excited to meet you.
So you are born again into God's family.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And when you're born into God's family, you are born to a living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And that's why I said earlier, "Hope is not found within me, rather, it's found through the regenerating work of the Spirit of God and the Word of God."
I'm very excited to meet you.
This brother is a good translator. Another description
is that we are born again to a living hope
through the resurrection of our Lord Jesus Christ.
I'm very excited to meet you.
You see, it is the hope of the resurrection of Christ that we have a living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And then it is described a little bit more with the words, "You are born again to a living hope that is imperishable, that's undefiled and unfading."
I'm very excited to meet you.
Maybe I can picture it in this way.
I'm very excited to meet you.
We celebrate Easter.
I'm very excited to meet you.
The two, one of the two major celebrations in the Christian calendar.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Christmas.
Christmas.
And Easter.
Easter.
And Easter has to do with what?
I'm very excited to meet you.
Life coming back from the dead.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Resurrection of Jesus from the dead.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And that resurrection is something that is imperishable, it's undefiled, and it's unfading.
I'm very excited to meet you.
So we celebrate it every year, reminding us
that we have a living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you. Otherwise, your faith, my faith, Christianity would be dead.
I'm very excited to meet you.
We wouldn't meet these three days together as God's people in a church.
I'm very excited to meet you.
All our prayers, all our reading of the Bible is meaningless.
I'm very excited to meet you.
So hear me out, brothers, sisters.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Why do you gather?
I'm very excited to meet you.
Why you come to church?
I'm very excited to meet you.
Why you worship?
I'm very excited to meet you.
It's because we have a living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
The other thing we see in these verses of 3 to 5 is that this living hope is protected.
I'm very excited to meet you.
How is it protected?
I'm very excited to meet you.
Because we see three key words here.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Okay, hope that is kept for us.
I'm very excited to meet you.
It's guarded by God's power.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And then one day, it's gonna be revealed to us in the final salvation.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Those are the words that we find in verse 4 and 5.
I'm very excited to meet you.
It all conveys the idea that it is secure for you and I.
I'm very excited to meet you.
God keeps it.
I'm very excited to meet you.
He's gonna guard it.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And one day, it's gonna be revealed to us.
I'm very excited to meet you.
I think a good way to see this is, all of us, in one way or another, find that land is very valuable.
I'm very excited to meet you.
In America, we call that real estate.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Real estate.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Here in India and South Asia, we call it property or land.
I'm very excited to meet you.
If your parents have land, what do they do?
I'm very excited to meet you.
They pass it on to their children.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Or grandchildren.
I'm very excited to meet you.
That's what my parents did with us.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And hopefully, your parents do with you.
I'm very excited to meet you.
That piece of property may be very big.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Or it may be very small.
I'm very excited to meet you.
But regardless, we have a piece of land.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Okay, the idea of passing it on is what we call an inheritance.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Okay, so, hope is like an inheritance that is passed on to you and I.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And one day, just like you will receive the property of your parents or grandparents, one day, we will receive the inheritance from Jesus Christ.
I'm very excited to meet you.
God says, "I promise it to you."
I'm very excited to meet you.
"I'm gonna give it to you."
I'm very excited to meet you.
"And I guarantee it."
I'm very excited to meet you.
That's the idea of God in protecting us.
I'm very excited to meet you.
That's what we find in verses 1, verses 3 to 5.
I'm very excited to meet you.
God has given us a living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Then it leads to verses 6 to 9 about how we live out our faith.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Did I not say that faith and hope are tied together?
I'm very excited to meet you.
Well, we see this in verses 6 to 9.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Where he says, "In this you rejoice, though now for a little while, if necessary, you have been grieved by various trials, so that the testing of the genuineness of your faith, which is more precious than gold, that perishes."
I'm very excited to meet you.
When you read verses 6 to 9, you notice that 3 times the word "tested" is used.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Is used in verse 8, where he says, "You're tested by fire."
I'm very excited to meet you.
I'm sorry, in verse 7.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And then in verse 7, "Tested," your genuineness of your faith.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And then once again, "You're tested" in verse 8.
I'm very excited to meet you.
3 times.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Yesterday, I talked about being tested of your faith through the fire of trials.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And today, we see that same idea.
I'm very excited to meet you.
But this time, as we go through the test of fire, it purifies us.
I'm very excited to meet you.
So that we would come out like it says, pure and precious.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And the result will be to give praise to God.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Having a living hope causes us to have a genuine, pure, living faith.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And I want you to notice something.
I'm very excited to meet you.
In verse 6, he says, "Though now for a little while..."
I'm very excited to meet you.
You grieve because of these various trials.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And then verse 7, he says, "Though it is tested by fire."
I'm very excited to meet you.
And then finally, in verse 8, "Though you have not seen you love, though you have not seen now, you believe in him and rejoice with joy."
I'm very excited to meet you.
And so what Peter is trying to do here is using the word "though" to bring encouragement in our life as we go through these trials.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And notice how he describes it.
I'm very excited to meet you.
It's a little while.
I'm very excited to meet you.
It's a short time.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Before you experience that living hope.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Now, it may not feel like it's a little while or a short time.
I'm very excited to meet you.
But that's how God's perspective is.
I'm very excited to meet you.
I love the words of this song.
I'm very excited to meet you.
It says, "It won't be long when we'll be leaving here."
I'm very excited to meet you.
It won't be long, we'll be going home.
I'm very excited to meet you.
We count the years as weeks, we count the weeks as days.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And a day now, we'll be going home.
I'm very excited to meet you.
You see, if we can have God's timetable in the life that we live in this world, then it helps us to see.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And I know it's very hard for children and young people, right?
I'm very excited to meet you.
Whenever a family goes on a trip, whether by train or car.
I'm very excited to meet you.
What's the thing that children always say?
I'm very excited to meet you.
They always say, "How much longer?"
I'm very excited to meet you.
"When are we gonna get there?"
I'm very excited to meet you.
And the parent says, "Not too long from now."
I'm very excited to meet you.
And you know children, they're very antsy, moving around, you know, very fudgy.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And sometimes, as Christians, we are like children.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Very antsy.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Very impatient.
I'm very excited to meet you.
So we learn from our children
as we teach them.
I'm very excited to meet you. Because we're saying the same thing to ourselves.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Isn't it true what 1 John, verse 3, chapter 3, verse 2 says?
I'm very excited to meet you.
He says, "Beloved, we are the sons and daughters of God, and it doesn't appear yet, but when Christ appears, we're gonna be like him, for we're gonna see him just as he is."
I'm very excited to meet you.
So there's a time element.
I'm very excited to meet you.
But there's also a love element.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Though you don't see him, you love him.
I'm very excited to meet you.
I don't know if you ever see a couple that live far apart from each other, one city to another city.
I'm very excited to meet you.
They long to see each other face to face.
I'm very excited to meet you.
But as they're apart from each other, their love grows more and more.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And that's the same thing too, even with a father who goes off into the military to serve and their children is at home waiting.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And that's the same with us and the Lord Jesus Christ.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Though you don't see him, yet you love him.
I'm very excited to meet you.
So there's a time element.
I'm very excited to meet you.
There's a love element.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Then finally, there's a trust element.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Though you don't see him, you believe, and the word "believe" is "you trust."
I'm very excited to meet you.
And why is that important?
I'm very excited to meet you.
Because Peter is writing to a second-generation group of Christians.
I'm very excited to meet you.
And these second-generation Christians have never seen Jesus, never been with Jesus physically.
I'm very excited to meet you.
Peter has,
as a fisherman, he was called by...
And King David experienced the forgiveness of sin. So we're saved from the penalty of sin, we're saved from the power of sin, or being saved from the power of sin. And then the third thing is, one day, we will be saved from the very presence of sin. What does sin do? It brings eternal death. What does sin do? It causes us to see that Satan's destiny is in the eternal lake of fire. And when we are saved from the very presence of sin, it's not the lake of fire, but it's heaven itself. So as we look at verses 10 to 12, we read concerning this salvation, the prophets who prophesied about the grace that was to be yours, they searched, they inquired carefully, inquiring what person or time the spirit of Christ in them was indicating when he predicted the sufferings of Christ and the subsequent glories. And so, we are born again to a living hope. And this living hope tests our living faith. And it causes us to see the living Christ. In the training that we do with pastors, one of the tools we help pastors to see is that they need to take God's word and point people to Jesus Christ. If we're going to preach and teach and shepherd God people, we need them to see Jesus Christ, the good, great shepherd. Because Christ is the focus and the fulfillment of the scriptures. And the words here in 1 Peter, chapter 1, 10 to 12, speaks about Christ in his what? In his suffering and his subsequent glories. Okay, let's do a Bible drill. Okay, whoever turns to Luke, chapter 24, verse 30, 24, verse 26, stand up and read it. Luke 24, verse 26. Children, you're also invited. Stand up and read it. Luke 24, verse 26. Yes, and then read verse 27. Good. Okay, thank you. Did you notice these two verses? Jesus is speaking to the two people on the road to Emmaus. They were blind, they couldn't see that this was Christ. And he says to them in verse 26, Messiah needs to suffer these things and then enter into his glory. So what does Christ do? He starts with Moses, the first five books of the Old Testament. And then he talks about the prophets, the major prophets, five of them. And then the 12 minor prophets. And then he also talks about the Psalms. Because that's what we have in verse 44 of the same chapter. And with the Old Testament, what does he do? He interpreted, he explained to them the scriptures concerning himself. That's what it means to focus and see Christ fulfill the scriptures. And that's what we have here in 1 Peter 1, 10 to 12. This passage helps us see that the prophets of the Old Testament wanted to see Jesus, the Messiah. They searched, they inquired. And that's mentioned two times in verse 10 and then also verse 11. And how did they do it? They did it carefully, diligently. And then, notice what it says. In verse 12, it was reviewed to them that they were serving not themselves, but you. You would think that the prophets of the Old Testament was serving God when it came to the scriptures. And the answer is, they are. But they were also serving you. Because Peter is speaking a word of encouragement to them. That this living Christ, who brings living hope in light of your living faith, they're there to help you. As they serve us and us today as well, they serve them and us today. That's the emphasis of both verse 10 and 12. Two things about this salvation. The person and the period of time. Obviously, the person is Messiah. And the period of time is at the right time. So that Christ's suffering and his resurrection and his ultimate glory was for you and I. He's the right person doing this at the right time. And finally, just to show how important this is, he closes by saying in the last verse, verse 12, these things angels long to look at. So can you picture it? Angels in this room on this meeting. And they're listening for the person of Christ and the salvation of Christ. And it is given to you. So that you might understand and experience that. The angels are longing not to be able to experience it because they can't. But as they look down on us here, they're saying, glory to God for the people of God who hear it and understand and apply it in their lives. Because angels can't experience salvation. But human beings can. The people in this community can. The neighbors and the friends and relatives you have. That's why he starts out by giving a blessing in verse 3. Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. And you and I are the ones who are receiving this blessing. And because we receive that blessing, what's the intended response? What's the application? Do we keep it to ourselves? We need to be blessing others. And we are used by God to communicate that good news to other people as well. Brothers and sisters, you and I have been born again to a living hope. And this living hope helps us to live out our faith. And as we live out our faith in this troubled world, a world that is full of suffering and pain and hardship. We keep our eyes focused on Jesus Christ, who's our living Savior. There's one thing I'd like to share before we break. In addition to the angels being in this room, there are also demons in this room. Because you know that we are in a spiritual warfare. And what do the demons want to do? Like John, chapter 10 says, Satan comes to do what? To steal the truth that you're receiving. He's a robber, he's a thief. So that as we go into our break, don't let Satan and his angels steal the truth from you. Don't let him take away the joy that you have in the hope that you have. When you break, some of you will go to your phone and as you look at your messages, they can steal away the joy you have. For some of you, when you take your break, you may go on and talk about other things, what you're going to be cooking. Other things that needs to happen today. Don't let Satan steal what you've just heard this morning. For you boys and girls, you're looking forward and going out and having fun and play. And that's fine to do. But remember, the most important thing is not having fun and games. But the most important thing is knowing the joy of the Lord, that is your strength. Let's pray. We thank you, Lord, that the joy of the living hope that we have gives us strength and power to live our lives. We pray against what Satan desires to do with his demons. He is out to steal. He is out to rob. And he is even out to kill the word of God that we have just heard. But we will stand firm on Jesus Christ. And stand on the word of God. So that we may know of the blessed hope that we have as we live our faith in this world. That is given to us through our living Lord Jesus Christ. And if you are here this morning and you don't know for sure that you have been saved from the punishment and the penalty of sin, may the spirit of God speak to your heart so that you can talk to the pastor or to the church leaders about how you can know for sure that when you pass from this life, you have eternal life. Thank you that we are in the land of the dying, headed for the land of the living. And that has been made possible through our living resurrected Jesus Christ. We praise you and thank you in his name. And God's people say, amen. So we'll have a short break as you go down, we have some tea arranged for all of you. So kindly have your tea and then come back while we sing the song.
See, Kriyana Navalu Tharagavaste Pradhana Jaskunam. Pradhana, ma preem galaparalokumunna ma thanri parshudravanu deva. Meri kude kalumlo e rendavudiname akka prachayaka koodikaluku. Ninnadinamnunchi momalandhurathanri me parshudhalimulosamukuchinunduku veranistothramalu. Gahtamoodusamsramnathandri prachayaka koodikalu. Paristhitinubhati lekunna enapudikini, meer kani karinchii. Me varshyamunathandri elshadai pradhana mandrimnakkurupistinunduku veranistothramalu. Dhankarkay kritaknasuruchelistunnam. Ninnadinamnudhey kalumlo thanri shishur prabha meyaka bodhan ardamcheskolay poyinaru. Taravata pootthi kardham jaskunnaru. Dhankarkay thanri, aavidanga thanri mem goda. Me vaakhimanardamcheskutum meyaka jnannamanarblipradhisunnam. Ude kalumlo prabhamari nirikshana, prema, visvasamu. E moodu pramukhimmanannitikante prema gopadane maatana thanri. Madhrithpeturnich prabhamakarkay thiskuchinunduku veranistothramalu. Kastamalu, nastamalu, stinapudak goda prabha meethattumemomali. Thanri mem oorputthunthaku makku bijeemanugiripradhisunnam. Entomanduchinunduku veranistothramalu. E rendavud sessionlagodathanri ma kandhar kavashina. Vaakhimanu me paralok simhasmu chividiluchay manjepi. Me karischimapaivuncimanjepi. Me atmanavamadhsanchitimpachay manjepi. Maraksharatthanri, paatalaythenemi prabhamari online, offline, streamline. Goda me sanidhamatauvchinadpitsimanjepi. Kritaknasuruchelistu, saankalan goda sidhapataankreincimanjepi. Ma pradhana ma prabhu nu, ma rakshkorene yes krishthivanamri virekonthunnam thanri. Amen.
Paadasankeya haidu. Modhirtrendicharnalvadukunnam. Paadasankeya haidu modhirtrendicharnal matrami. Kinda unnaroth, daichespaikochendi. The first two stanzas of song number five and request everyone who's down or anywhere to come into the puddle soon.
Tisha. Sarva shaktuni vaakui ideye, sarva murnu meevae. Devuni sarva murnu meevae. Sarva shaktuni vaakui ideye, sarva murnu meevae. Devuni sarva murnu meevae. Paulainaa kefainaa, appaloainaa lokamainaa. Paulainaa kefainaa, appaloainaa lokamainaa. Oh navii marieevi ainaa, oh navii marieevi ainaa. Sarva murnu meevega, sarva murnu meevega. Sarva shaktuni vaakui ideye, sarva murnu meevae. Devuni sarva murnu meevae. Rabbavunavi ainalu, rabbavunavi ainalu. Sarva murnu meevega, sarva murnu meevega. Sarva shaktuni vaakui ideye, sarva murnu meevae. Devuni sarva murnu meevae. Sarva shaktuni vaakui ideye, sarva murnu meevae. Devuni sarva murnu meevae.
Paadasankeya aaru. Neerskunnamukvilethe modhirtrendicharnalvadukunnam. Paadasankeya aaru. Song number six, the first two stanzas we will learn and probably be sing along.
Okshari partham vinandi, ochval parani kalshi, kani winntownani.
Akashama, alakinchuma, maatalaadethan. Akashama, alakinchuma, maatalaadethan. Eehu avantu ayana janamegada. Yakobe, swasthy bhagavu. Ehuhu avantu ayana janamegada. Yakobe, swasthy bhagavu. Aranya pradecham pulayenduna. Aranya pradecham pulayenduna. Thikara dwanikal heedarilo, dwanikal goledu. Thikara dwanikal heedarilo, dwanikal goledu. Akashama, alakinchuma, maatalaadethan. Akashama, alakinchuma, maatalaadethan.
Kalshi parandi, charunnam voltashni, kalshi parandi.
Akashama, alakinchuma, maatalaadethan. Akashama, alakinchuma, maatalaadethan. Eehu avantu ayana janamegada. Yakobe, swasthy bhagavu. Ehuhu avantu ayana janamegada. Yakobe, swasthy bhagavu. Aranya pradecham pulayenduna. Aranya pradecham pulayenduna. Thikara dwanikal heedarilo, dwanikal goledu. Thikara dwanikal heedarilo, dwanikal goledu. Akashama, alakinchuma, maatalaadethan. Akashama, alakinchuma, maatalaadethan. Eehu avantu ayana janamegada. Yakobe, swasthy bhagavu. Ehuhu avantu ayana janamegada. Yakobe, swasthy bhagavu.
I'm consorting with my translator. Before you begin, we're gonna do a game, a little game.
Avati aaramanigmundu, okacha chinnagame lagachudda.
It's a game of reading the scriptures, not knowing where.
Vaakhim chaduthamu, maradi ekkadundo teleedu, kani leesichadavali.
And he'll see how well you know the word of God.
Marie lekhanaalu, unaga Bible references enta bhagam meekutelsanadi, e game dhara telisthat.
So my brother will read and you'll listen. And if you know where the passage is, you'll join in with him. You stand up and join him in the reading of God's word.
Karani neenokavasham chaduthanu, adi ekkadundo miru gurtupatti, naathobhatu miru evaranath. Gurtupattinalevarate untay, al ventay leeschinaathobatsadavali.
Yes, so if you're a child, young person or adult. Let's read God's word, but I'm not telling you where. And as you find out where, you stand up.
Or ekkadana chappamu, marie mere devuvaakhimnada ekkadundo, bhabariballa chusti.
Ready? You understand?
Evasthalana, evaranaparle.
Okay, let's have a little fun. We can have fun in church.
Aaladanga, vinodam.
Okay. Brother, we start from first verse, chapter 11.
I start from first verse?
Hmm?
I start from first verse?
Yeah, you do then, dorkele.
Sarani, netchaavatanu, marie gurtupattinal thiisvintnachadavali. Neenu krishthunu poli naduchukunuchunna prakaramu. Meerunu nannu poli naduchukunudi. Meeru annee vishyamnala, ede varke interestleanatunde.
Just keep reading.
Meeru annee vishyamnala, nannu naapkumse.
Yeah, keep reading.
Nannu naapkumcheschukunuchu. Neenu me kapaginchina, katralanu gayikunuchunnavani, mimunu mechkunuchunano.
Keep reading.
Pratipurushuni, ah, kuchunaka, thank you. Pratipurushuniki sirasu krishtanu. Strikisirasu purushudanu. Krishthunaku sirasu devudanu, meeru teliskunavalanani koruchunano. Ee purushudu talameeda musukku vesukoni pradhana chenolayka pravachinchino. Aa purushudu tanatalanu auamana paruchino. Ee stree talameeda musukku vesikunaka pradhana chenoh. Ever, ever dorkele dekka?
Anybody?
Shosanad, uncle shosanad, enke evaranath dorkeenada, me dorkele daani. Okkare sister okkare laysaradi. Ah, ee stree talameeda musukku vesikunaka pradhana chenolayka pravachinchino. Aa stree tanatalanu auamana paruchino. Elanaga, adi amek shauramu cheevanitugane yundunu. Stree musukku vesukunnela, ametala ventrakalu katthirinchukunavalu. Katthirinchukunatayinenu, shauramu changekunatayinenu, stree kaumana mate, am musukku vesukunavalu. Purushudaitte ainkukarana. Purushudaitte devuni polikayu mahimaayunai naaduganuka. Talameeda musukku vesukunakuradugani. Stree purushuni mahimaayayunnadi. Elanaga, stree purushuni nundi kaligine, kaligene gani, purushudu stree nundi kaligaleedu. Mariu stree purushuni korake gani, purushudu stree koraku sushimpavada leedu. Induvalana devadutranubhati, adhikara suuchana strikitalameeda undavalenu. Aite prabhu nandu strikiveruga purushudu leedu, purushunkiveruga stree leedu. Stree purushuni ellagu kaligeno, alage purushudu stree mulamuga kaligeno. Gani samastamaynavi devuni mulamuga kaligeno. Meelo meere yochinchukunudi, stree musukulenedai devuni pradhinchutatagunna. Purushudu talaventrakalu benchukunata, ane auamana sabasiddhamu meekutochunukada. Strikitalaventrakalu, paiitachunguga yebedanuganuka. Ametala ventrakalu, benchukunata amekuganamu.
How far? Fifteen verses? Fifteen, okay, keep going.
Okay. Opadharo.
Anybody else joining?
Evadananu kalahapriduga kanabadaneelala, maaloonanu devi sanghamlaneelalu, itti acharamu leyadani vado, teliskunavalenu. Meekuy agna ichuchu, mimunamechukunannu, meerukuda achchuta, yekkuva kieduke gani, yekkuva meelukukaadu. Modhirtisangathi emanaga, meerusanghamnandukoodiyunnapuru, meelo kakshalu kalavani vinuchunano. Kontamattukku, idinijamani nammuchunano. Meelo yogillenavaravaro kanabadaneetlu, meelo binnavi praimulundaka, tappadu. Mirandharukoodivachchundaga, meeruprabhuratri bojanamuchaita, asadhyamu kaadu.
Nobody else joining? Said they all?
They all know where am reading.
Huh?
They all know where am reading.
Where is our brother reading from?
First Corinthians, chapter 11.
First Corinthians, chapter 11, yes, good. So, okay. We are gonna go to first Corinthians 11 in a few moments.
Kabati kodhinimshalam, marie ajjam chustam, modhirtikorindi padakondajam.
My second, my message at this time is not a second part of first Peter 1.
Modhirtipetru, madharchanl, rendavagamu kaadu, e bagamu chusedi.
But there is a connection.
Adi daanikidinigo sambandamundi.
Because we find that Paul says, now abides faith, hope and love, and the greatest is love.
Kabati visvasamu, nirikshana, prema, e moodu niruchunu, aite vichuloo, prema gopadiyandustha.
Yeah, I look around, is it here, is it printed somewhere, on the wall?
Vaakhimikka ekkadanundandi?
First Corinthians 13.
Modhirtikorinti laku, padamudhacham, chivavachnumkara? Padamudh padamudh, ekkadanunda?
But we know the verse, right?
Aite manaka vachnumede telissu.
And oftentimes, we say first Corinthians 13 is the love chapter.
Ah, modhirtikorinti padamudhajamu, mariprema kaligina, leda premanugu彻cheppe ajjamani chalasal chepkuntam.
And we read it, you know, maybe during a wedding or a special occasion where a man and a woman gets married.
Kabati marivivaha sandarbula, anaga stree purushuli vahamcheskunne sandarbula, cha yekku sarlu e ajjam chadutar chalavaru.
Okay, and later on, as we look at those verses, we'll see it in its proper context.
Kabati manum tarvata, manamu dini sandarbana saranga, ee bagani manum chustam, baga, dhiyanamalo.
So, as we turn to first Corinthians, chapter 11.
Kabati modhirtikorinti padakondajam chusundaga.
We gather together as a church.
Manam sanghamuka kudukonvastam.
And Pastor Paul was telling me that the gathering of this church started last June of 2021, after, during the COVID situation.
Kabati COVID samyamulo, marie gathasamachramchua, twenty twenty, renduvaliruva, gudjunlo, manam dini praramisani, marikaapari, palanagar chaptavannarunatho.
And whether here in India or over United States, there are some churches to have yet to gather together.
Kabati inkka Bharadeshimu gani, Amerikalagani, inkka guda, marisanghalo chalamandukudukotled.
Okay, but did you know that there's a time when God does not come in the gathering of God's people?
Aite churandi, konisandarbalu unnae, devuuprazalu kudukunutanu, devu mechkole.
And that's what we have in first Corinthians, chapter 11, starting in verse 17 to 22.
Adhe maatano churandi, manam modhirtikorinti padakondajam, padihedunuchisadute akkada manam chustam.
I don't know if our brother read those verses yet.
Yes, yes.
Yeah?
Have read it.
Good, okay. And you might say, what?
Meer ankoch, adenti?
God doesn't want us to gather together.
Anta manam andramukudukodam, sanghamuka kudukodam, devu gistam leda, aanaku koratleda, anukoch.
And that's exactly what verse 17 says.
Padihedavachnumu, sarigga adhe maata chaptundandi.
Paul says, through the spirit of God, I I don't commend you because when you come together, it's not for the better, but it's for the worse. And that's scary because it's possible that as a church, we come together not for something better, but something that is bad. And he tells us why in verse 18. You come together and what is there? There's division. There's factions. Okay, and there's parties, you know, splits. Okay, and that was the church of Corinth. A church that was very divisive, very selfish. And then he talks about when you come together in verse 20. For the Lord's table, what happens? You're coming together, one is hungry and another is drunk. So I can understand why the coming together of the church was not for the better. And you know the church in Corinth through the book of First Corinthians. It was a selfish church. It was a church that followed after this person or that person. It was a church that took people to the court of law. And something even worse, that to hear that the father has sexual adultery with another woman who's not his wife. So of course, it's not good to gather. And when you have all those activities taking place. And why is that? Because instead of being a church that shows the love of Jesus Christ, they were showing their selfishness. That's why First Corinthians 13 was written. Because what is love? It's patient. It's kind. It doesn't boast. It's not proud. It doesn't insist on one's own way. It's not resentful. All these things is what love shows. And the church in Corinth was not showing that. And one of the areas is the gathering together around the Lord's table. So First Corinthians, in its context, doesn't have to do with marital love. It has to do with love with the brothers and sisters in the body of Christ. That's the first part of First Corinthians, chapter 17 to 22. Now, we see, starting in verse 23, where God does commend the church. Verses 23 to 34 is probably read on a monthly basis when you gather together for your communion service. Some churches do it every month. I speak at a church that does it every week. And even some churches do it maybe once every three months. But whatever time they do it, I think the important thing is that we celebrate the Lord's table. I think doing it more often is far better than doing it less. So Paul says in verse 23, I receive from the Lord and I deliver to you. So that the celebration of the Lord's supper isn't something that he conjured up, but rather it was given to him by revelation. And as you read through this very familiar passage. I see in this passage five things. That is significant about our gathering together around the Lord's table. The first is that it is the Lord's table. It's not man's table. It's not the pastor's table. It is the Lord's table. And the word Lord conveys the idea of Jesus Christ, high and lifted up. He is the head of the church. He is the holy one. And for that reason, it's very easy to forget that the Lord's table is the Lord's table. When I was younger, a very new Christian. And I see the table set up. Okay, and you know what I think? Oh, we're gonna have breakfast this morning. A small breakfast. Piece of cracker. A little juice. That's not the Lord's table. That may be my table. But that's not the Lord's table. And so, as we gather around the Lord's table, remember, we look up. And that was the problem of the church in Corinth. They weren't looking up. They were looking at each other. And that's why there was division. That's why they were fighting among each other. They had forgotten that Jesus Christ is utmost and highest. And just like Isaiah says, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty. So that's the first thing. And you notice throughout this passage, it says, the Lord's table, the Lord's table. Second thing. We look back. And I find that in the word that is used in verse 24 and 25. And it says, this is my body which is for you. Do this, looking back in remembrance of me. And then, once again in verse 26. This cup is the new covenant in my blood. Do this as often as you drink it in looking back and remembering me. Okay, so that the celebration of the Lord's table is a time to look back in memory of what Christ has done. Christ's body, hung on the cross, was broken for you and I. Christ's blood that was spilled at the cross. We need to look back as often as possible for the great work of Jesus Christ and the gospel. So that we realize at the cross, nobody is higher, nobody is lower, we are all on equal plane. Whether you're rich or poor, male or female, bond or slave, we are all together as we look back at the cross. And I'm sure that you are reminded of this by those who officiate the Lord's table in this church. And we need to do that all the time. So we look up. We look back. And then in verses 27 to 32. This is a section that is probably the longest. Okay, amen. If we look up, if we look back, the next thing is, we need to look within ourselves. That's why in this section here, it talks about examining our hearts. So that when we take the Lord's table of the bread and the cup, we have to take it in a manner that is worthy before Him. And as we examine ourselves, we understand the significance of the broken body of Jesus Christ. We understand the blood that was shed for you and I. And why is there a need for examination? Because some in the congregation ended up being sick and weak and even some died. I'm sure that the pastor who officiates the communion gives you time to check your heart. We need to check our heart because of sin. And sometimes, sin isn't something that I commit and do. Sin could also be something that I don't do. There is what is called the sin of committing wrong or evil. There is also the sin of omitting what God has told us to do. A good example is Jonah. Jonah called him to go to Nineveh and what did he do? It's what he didn't do. He didn't obey God. He didn't follow what God told him. So we examine our hearts because of omitting something or committing something. Because Paul wants to make sure that the church is pure. And that the church would be awakened if there are people who are sick or who are weak and even some who have died. The past two years, with the whole COVID situation. I'm sure it raised the sense of examining your life. Because I know for some, if they were sick. You know, what caused the sickness. If some had died. If you think about it, if that happened in the church. Where people were sick and weak and some died. That would cause a real sense of soberness and serenity. And I'm sure that when the pastor officiates the communion, he carefully warns you that if you are in sin or you are not walking with the Lord, do not partake. And so, it's a time to look within. And that's good to do. So that we would have clean lives and pure hearts. And sometimes, as we look within, we even check, how's my relationship with my wife or my husband with my children? And how's my relationship with other brothers and sisters in the body of Christ? I remember one pastor who said, we need to keep a short account with sin. We take care of sin, not sometime down the road, but as immediately as possible. Peter writes something about husband and wife in 1 Peter, chapter 3, where he says, what? If the husband and wife aren't getting along. They need to take care of things. And we know what Paul says, that husbands love your wives as Christ loves the church. And as a husband, you haven't been loving and understanding and patient with your wife. And same thing. As a wife, you are to be supportive, respectful. And I haven't been that way. And then as parents with children. You're not supposed to provoke them to anger. But you are to raise them up. So as we take time to look within, we check out not only our relationship with Christ, but with one another. And that leads me to the fourth. We look up. We look back and remembering Christ's death for us. We look within to check out our heart and life. And then we look around. At the body of Christ, the brothers and sisters. I find that in verse 29. He says, for anyone who eats. He says, "For anyone who eats and drinks without discerning the body, eats and drinks judgment on himself."
प्राबू शरिरमणी विवेचिम्पकतिनी त्रागुवाडु तनकु शिक्षाविद कलिगुटके तिनी त्रागुचुन्नान अन्नमार जुस्तुन
Some people interpret that word, the body, to be the body of Christ, the physical body of Jesus Christ.
अदे प्राबू शरिरमु मनक बाउतेका शरिरमु अन्न मनक अकड़का गमनिस्तान्दि कोन्तमन्दि अक्षराला दिस्कुन्तर्दन्नी
Okay, if it was, then Paul would have said, "The body and the blood of Christ."
ओको वालेदन अक्षराला दिस्कुन्ते मरि शरिरम ओकट्यप्पी रक्तमु कुड़ जप्पाल कदा
Because he said that back in verse twenty-seven.
27:1
But here, he just uses the word body.
आइते 29:1 केवलम शरिरमु अन्न माटमात्रम उपयिन्छन
And my understanding is, he's talking about the body of the church.
कबर्ती नाग्राम्पु नाग्राम्पेंट अंते कृष्ट योक्का शरिरम लेदा कृष्ट देहमु संगम गुरुन जपनान
And it's very appropriate.
अंतेकादु वर्तिन्चे दिकु उन्तुन्दि
Because in the church in Corinth
येन्दुकंडे कोरिंथलो ना संगमु
What was the church doing?
येन्यास्न ना संगमु
They were doing all those things that I had mentioned earlier.
इन्तम मुझ चप्पिना आ चेडुकारेल अन्नी गुड़ संगम जेसिन्दि
Okay, not treating each other correctly.
अन्ना उचुर्ण यो वोकर नोकरु आदरिन्छु
Not showing love to one another.
वोकर कोकरु प्रियम चुपिन्छकुपोडम
Even taking people to court in order to get their money.
आ वारुनुच्छि डब्बु लागडानिकी न्यायस्थान देरकी राज्य देरकी अधिकारले चट्टसबलक दिस्कल्ड
So we need to look around.
कबर्ती मनचुट्टू गुड़ जुडाली मन
And kind of notice, "Oh, brother and so-and-so is not here today."
आ पलाना सहोदरडु लेदा पलाना सहोदरली राले दिरोज
Maybe he's sick.
मरि अनारोग्यम उन्नाद
Maybe something happened to him.
लेदा आयनक येवन जरुगिन्दा
Or a sister so-and-so.
लेदा पलाना सहोदरी
"Oh, she's been going through some hard times."
आ सहोदरी गुड़ चाला कष्टालो वेल्टुन्दि
Health issues.
बाउश अनारोग्य समस्तिकाउच
A hardship.
येदो कष्टम
When we look around the body of Christ
कबर्ती कृष्ट शरिरमलो आटिटु मनम जूसनपुडु
God calls us to minister with one another.
वोकरी कोकरु परिचर्य चेडनिकी पिलिपुनिस्तर
To serve one another.
अन्ना वोकर नोकरु सेविन्छुना अवकाश
To prefer one another over myself.
कबर्ती तमकु तमुगा आकुन्दा वोकरीनी वोकरु एकुगा आदरिन्छुकोड़म
So you see, the church not only needs to minister to the community and to the city, but also to each other.
कबर्ती चुर्ण येदो समाजमलो बाइट देशमलो पट्टमलो मात्रमैकादु परिचर्या मनलो मनमु कुड़ मन परिचर्य जेस्कोल
We are called to be servants to one another.
आ वोकर नोकरु दास्तुलमुगा उन्डुटके बिलोबट्तिमी
We prefer one another over ourselves.
अन्ना मनक मनु गोका आकुन्दा वोकर नोकरु हिच्छुगा इन्छुकोड़म एकुगा इन्छुकोड़
You kind of notice that as I kind of walk out, you know, I shake hands with the children and pat their head.
मीरु गमनिच्छुन्द उच्चन रोच्चनपुडु प्रेतसार गुड़ा चिन्ना पिल्लल तो गुड़ा चेतल गल्थुन्तनु वाले चेतल तलमे चेत
Sometimes as adults, we see children as, "Ah, you know, they're not important."
चाला सार्ले पत्ता वाल्लमगा पिल्लल आसर्ले वाले इकड़ा उन्तार्ले अन्नट्यु चोलकान्गा जुस्तुन्तम
But you know, children are just as important as the young people and as adults.
पत्तालु यवनस्तुलु संगमलो इन्तो प्रामुख्यम चिन्ना पिल्लल गुड़ अन्ते प्रामुख्यम संगमलो
And I want to bring encouragement to them.
कबर्ती वारीकुड़ कोथिको प्रोत्साहनी तेवल अन्नदि नाव उद्देश्य
Sometimes in the church, our focus is on the young people.
कुनिसाले संगमलो केवलम यवनस्तुलम इन्ना द्रष्ट वेटन्त
They're the strong ones.
येन्दुकंडे वारु बलमयन वारनी
They're the energetic ones.
वार इन्तो शक्तिकल वारनी
They're the ones that are still good-looking.
कबर्ती इन्तो चक्का कन्पार्टारनी
But when it comes to the old people
आइते मरि ओढरली रुद्दुल विष्यमु पत्तालेन वार विष्यम कोस्ते
You know, they have their aches and pains.
आ वालकुवाल नो पुल बादलुन्तै
You know, around the dinner table, my children say to my wife and I
कबर्ती मा बल्लचुट्टू अंडे मम टेबल चुट्टू बोन्चेस्कुन्डु मा पिल्लल नातन अंतर
You talk about two things.
रेंडु विष्याल जप्तुन्तर्नक
You talk about health
आरोग्यमु
And what food to eat and not eat.
आ येदि तिनाले येदि तिना गुड़दु
Okay, and so, we can't neglect the elderly, we can't neglect the young, we can't neglect the children, we can't neglect brothers and sisters.
कबर्ती रुद्दुलाइना यवनस्तुलाइना पिल्ललाइना येवरेन गानु गुड़ सहोदरसरे येवन्नी कुड़ मन रिलेक्शन चेगुड़
See, that's one of the things about the body of Jesus Christ.
कृष्ट शरिरमुलो इदोका प्रामुख्यन विष्यम
It's made up of a family.
इदोका कुटुम्बमुला चेयबरिंदि
And sometimes the family forgets
कुनिसाले कुटुम्बम चुपोता उन्तदि
That we have brothers and sisters.
अन्नादमुल उन्नारु अक्कचेल्ल उन्नारन विष्यम चुपोतदि कुटुम्बम
So, we look up to the Lord, we look back to Jesus Christ for what He did.
येसु कृष्ट चेसिन्दि वेनेक्की जुस्ताम
We look within our hearts to examine it.
मनलो मनम जूसकुन्तम
And we then look around.
तरता मनचुट्टू जुस्ताम
And then the final thing.
तरता चिवर्दिगा
It says in verse twenty-six.
27:1
As you eat this bread and drink this cup, you proclaim something.
मीरु रट्टन तिनी त्रागु ई पात्रण त्रागुनपुडल्ला मीरु येमु प्रचरिस्तर अंतर
And what do you proclaim?
येम प्रचरिस्तर मीरु
You proclaim the Lord's death until He comes.
प्राबू वच्चुवरकु आयना मनमुनु प्रचरिन्छुद
So what look is that?
कबर्ती इपुड्यकड़ जुडालन
You look ahead.
मुंदुकु चुडाले
Because Jesus said, "I'm not going to drink this cup or eat this bread until when."
कबर्ती नेनु मीतो कुड़ मरला ई रट्टनु ई द्राक्षरसम तागन अंतर येपुरुक ते एपुरुक अंतर डुअलागु
Until I come in the kingdom.
नेनु ना राज्यमलो वच्चुवरकु नेनु मरला दिन्टलो पालुपोंदन अंतर
When He comes and sets up His kingdom, and we celebrate together around that table.
आयना वच्चितन राज्यमु स्तापिन्छनपु तन बल्लचुट्टू बोन्चेसिन्ता वरकु आयना वेचुन्त
And there'll be a grand celebration.
कबर्ती इन्तो गोप्पा संभरम उन्तुदि मनक अपुडु
We don't hear too much about the Lord's coming.
कबर्ती प्राबू योकर राकड़ु जे एकुगा विनम्म मन
But we need to.
कन्न विनाली
Because we live in a world that is falling apart.
येन्दुकंडे चिन्ना बिन्ना बाइ चक्कलमुक्कलाइपोय लोकमलो मनम उन्तुन
We live in a world that is full of problems.
कबर्ती इन्तो समस्यलु कष्टालुन्ने लोकमलो उन्तुन
And whether it's be wars, whether it be famine
युद्धालाइना करुवाइना
Whether it be sickness or diseases
तेगुलु
We need to look to the future.
आइते बविष्यत्तुकु मनम चुडाल
And as we look at the future
अलागु मुंदुकु जुस्तुन्डगा
It gives us a perspective of how to live in the present.
कबर्ती बविष्यत्तुलो जुस्तुन्डगा प्रस्तुतम मनम एलाजीविन्छन त्रुप्पदम मनम कलिगुन्तम
And as we look ahead
अलागु मुंदुक जुस्तुन्डगा
At the coming of Jesus Christ
अन्ना प्राबू येसु कृष्ट योकर राकड़ा वाइपु जुस्तुन्डगा
We will be rejoicing at the King's table.
आ राज्य योक्का बल्लचुट्टू लेदा बल्लयोद्दा मनम आनंदिस्ताम
So, as we come together for the better
कबर्ती मनमु एकुम मेलुकु कड़ु कुड़कुन्तुनाम
Keep that in mind as we celebrate the Lord's table.
आइते प्राबू बल्लचुट्टू वच्चनपुडु ई माटनु मनस्ल बेट्कोल
But not just the Lord's table
प्राबू बल्ला मात्रमैकादन
But anytime we gather.
मनु यपुरु कुड़कुड़न कोच्छन
Whether it's today
ईरोज गाउच
Or tomorrow
रेप गाउच
Or next week
लेदा वच्चे वारम गाउच
And as we do so, what will God say?
मनमाला कुड़कुन्तुनपु देवडी येन्यात्तर अन्ने मन विष्यमलो
He'll clap for us.
चप्पड्ली गुड़तर
Because he commends us for gathering.
अपुडु मनम कुड़कुन्तमार्ती प्राबू मच्कुन्तर
We find that there's two more verses.
चुर्ण रेंडु इन्का रेंडु वच्चनल नाय
And it says in verse thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-three and thirty-four.
33:34
So then, brothers and sisters, when you come together, eat, wait for one another, and if anyone is hungry, well, eat at home. So that when you come together, it's not for judgment about the other things, I will give you direction when I come.
कोरिंथी पदकुन्द 33:34 काबर्ती ना सहोदरलार बोजनम चेटकु मीरु कुड़िवच्चनपुडु वोकनी कोरकोको कनिपेट्कुनी उन्डिडि मीरु कुड़िवच्चित शिक्षाविद काननु काकुनुन्नत्लु एवरेन नाकलगुन्ते इन्टिवादने बोजनम चेवल्नु निन्वर्षणु मिगिता संगतुलु क्रामपर्तुन
So thirty-three and thirty-four takes us back to where it started in verse seventeen.
कट 33:34 वच्चनलु मनम आरंभमलो चदुकुना पदहेडो पज्जन वच्चनल दर्ग दिस्कल्डुन्नै मन
And what Paul is basically saying is
पालु सुत्रप्राङ्ग एमंटन अंतर
Love one another.
वोकर नोकरु प्रेमिन्छुडि
Wait for one another.
वोकर कोकरु कनिपेट्कुन्डि
Treat one another in a way that Christ would treat you.
कृष्ट मिम्मलम ई विष्यमलो एलागुन्तडु मीरु गुड़ वोकर विष्यमलो वोकर अट्यादरण खलिगुन्डालन अंतर
Because what is love?
येन्दुकंडे प्रेम अंते एम्टी
It shows patience.
सहनमुन चुपिन्छुते
What is love?
प्रेम अन्ग
It shows priority over the Lord and not over food that we eat.
कबर्ती येदो बोजनन्कंडे एकुगानिकादिकानी प्राबू वाले मनम प्रेमिन्छुतन चुपिन्छड़
What is love?
प्रेम अंते एम्टी
It's going to someone and confessing a sin of offense or hurt that has been caused.
कबर्ती वोकर देगरिक वेली मनवल्ला वारके मन हानिकलिगिन्देमु अभ्यंत्रम कलिगिन्देमु इदर नोप्पी कलिगिन्दने वेली वाड आ विष्यम सरिजेस्कुड़म ओप्पुकोड़
What is love?
प्रेम अन्ग एम्टी
It's going to a brother and sister who has a need and ministering to that need.
अक्करकलिगिन्न ओका सहोदरनी देगर्नो लेदा ओका सहोदर देगरको वेली आकंत तीच्या परिचर्यन चेडम
And most important of all
अन्ने रुकंडे प्रामुख्य
What is love?
प्रेम अन्ग
It is going out and sharing that good news of Jesus Christ to people that don't know Christ.
येसु कृष्टु प्राबूनी यरुगनी प्रजल्लेगरकु वेली येसु कृष्टु प्राबू योक्का सुब वार्तनु सुवार्तनु प्राकटिन्छड़म वारीकी पन्चकोड़
Now abides faith, hope and love.
कबर्ती अकड़ा अंतुनाडु मनम जूसनले ते विश्वासमु निरीक्षण प्रेम ई मुड़ निल्छुन
But what is the greatest?
आइते विटलो सृष्टम अन्नदि
Love.
प्रेम
For God so loved the world, He gave His Son, that whoever believes in Him won't perish but have everlasting life.
अगा देवडु लोकम इन्तो प्रेमिन्छनु आयना तन दित्यकुमाण्गा पुट्टनावान्दि विश्वासमुच् प्रतिवाडु नशिम्पका नित्यज्यम पोन्नुन्नत्ल आयननु मनक कोरकनो ग्रहिन्छनु
God commended His love toward us while we were still His enemies, Jesus Christ died for us.
मनम इन्कनु सेत्रमले वेंट सेत्रुलमा युन्डगा देवडु तन प्रेमनु वेलेड़ि परिचनड़ वेलनगा कृष्ट मनकोरकुम रुत्तीपोंदे
That's why love is the greatest.
अंदिके प्रेम आवि मुडिन्तलो सृष्टमयन्दि
But you also need to have faith.
आइते विश्वासमु कुड़ा मीरु कलिगुन्डाली
And hope.
निरीक्षणु कलिगुन्डाली
And love.
तरता प्रेम
So I trust that we would put all three together
कबर्ती मुडिन्तिनी कलिसी मनम कलिगुन्तम अन्नम उन्तुन
And see it lived out in our lives, in our church, in our marriages and in our families.
कबर्ती मन संगमलो मन कुटुम्बलो मन बाइवाहिक जीवितालो विटिनी मनम अनुवैस्तुनामु अन्नदि मन जूसकोल
And as we do so
अलागु चेस्तुन्डगा
We'll keep our focus on Jesus Christ.
येसु कृष्ट वाइपे मन गमनमुनु मन दृष्टिनिम्मेत
He will come back and receive us to Himself.
येन्दुकंडे आयना प्रत्यक्षमयनपुडु मनलनु आयन एद्दुकायन चेच्कुन्ताडु
Amen?
Amen.
Praise God.
Let's pray.
Lord, thank you for reminding us that it won't be long, it won't be long, when Jesus Christ will come.
प्राबू येसु कृष्ट योक्का राकड़ा सम्यमु मरि इन्तो दुरम लेदु इन्तो दुरम लेदनि मीरु मन नापुकम जेस्न
May you make the years into months and the months into weeks, the weeks into days.
प्राबू समस्तमलो नेल्लगानु नेलमुल नेललु वारमुल गानु वारमुलु दिनमुल गानु मीरु चेमनि प्रादिस्त
Keep our eyes looking toward Jesus.
मा कनुलनु येसु वाइपु उन्छुनाट्लुका प्राबू सायम्स
Continue to keep our love burning strong for you.
प्राबू नी कोरकु मा प्रेम अधिकमुगा मण्डुचुनाट्लुका चेमनि प्रादिस्त
Continue to cause our hope to be one that is living and vibrant.
प्राबू मा निरीक्षण जीवमु गल्लदिगानु प्राबू इन्तो वेलिगिन्छे दिगानु उन्नुन्नत्लुका सायम्स
May you continue to bless this church.
आई संगमलो मीरु आश्रय दिस्तुन्ड
And may you continue to bless the brothers and sisters in this church.
आई संगमलो ना सहोदर सहोदरल अन्नदेनि प्राबू मीरु आश्रय दिस्तुन्ड
That they would look around and see one another and serve one another.
अट्लु प्राबू वारु ईटु अटु अन्ना वारु वारु मरि तन वारु चुट्टू जुस्तु वोकर नोकरु सेविन्छुने वारिका चेन
So that we can say to God, "Be the glory, great things He has done."
तद्वारा ई देवडु आश्चर्य कारण मनकोरकु चेस्नु गनुका आयनके महिमा कलिगुनु गाकानी जपनट्यूका चेन
And may you speak to anyone here who have yet to trust Christ.
इन्कनु कृष्ट नंद विश्वासमुच्छन वारु प्राबू इकड़ेवरने उन्नारेमु प्राबू वानी कनिकरिच
Show that person their sin and point that person to the Savior.
प्राबू वारी पापमु वारक चुपिन्छेन्डि रक्षकुड़नी कुड़ा प्राबू वारी वारक चुपिन्छेन
The one who went to the cross with a broken body and shed his blood for that person's sin.
अट्लु प्राबू वारी पापमुलोकरके सिल्वन एकिन्न वानी चुपिन्छेन्डि तन शरिरमुन वेलिगोट्कन्ता रक्तमुन कार्चन वानी चुपिन्छेन्डि
We thank you that it is by grace that any of us are saved, and it is through the faith that you give us that we trust Jesus Christ.
कबर्ती प्राबू येसु कृष्टु प्राबून नम्मुनाट्लुका कृपचेत्रमुन रक्षिन्छनारु मालो विश्वासमुन कलिगिन्छन देवडु उनी वेनिन्स्तुतिस्तु वन्नान चलिस्त
We thank you again in Christ's wonderful and precious name.
मरला मीकु वन्नानम उस्तोत्रम चलिस्तु येसु कृष्ट योक्का अद्भुतमयना मनोहरमयना मनस्तुतिन्चि प्रादिन्चि वेड्कुन्तुनाम तन
Amen. Now, the final benediction, all are requested to stay back for food and fellowship.
चिवरि आश्रय दमयन तरता मरि अन्दरकी बोजन सावसमुन्तुन्दि दैचेसी अन्दर बोजन सावसम पालुपोंदरनी
So kindly, we can go up to the second floor and the food will be served to all of you.
रेंडु वंतस्कु वेल्नल्लेते मनक अन्दरकी बोजन वर्डिस्तार
And we gather again in the evening at six forty-five.
सायंकालम मरि आरु नलपैद्दुके मनक कुड़कुन्त
So kindly remember, God's servants are going to come and they'll be ministering the word even this evening.
कबर्ती सायंकालम गुड़ा देवन्दासुलु वस्तारु मनम अद्वलो वाक्य परिचर्य चेस्तार सायंकाल
So don't miss, you can kindly come and also bring others also with you.
कोर्ड दैचेसी विटिनु वधलुकोकन्डि मरि मीतो पट्टू इतरल्लो कुड़ा मरि कुड़कुक दिस्कुन्ड
And Sunday morning, we gather again, as usual, morning nine o'clock.
आदिवार मुद्यम मरि यदा विदिगा तम्मदिकंटलकु मनम आराधनकोरकु कुड़कुन्त
Again, a team will be there with us to minister the word.
कबर्ती ब्रुंदमु मन त उन्तारु वाक्य परिचर्य चेडनिकी
So kindly pray for these ministries and take your full share.
कोर्ड दैचेसी परिचर्यल मित्तमै प्रादन चेन्डि मी सम्पून्न भागमु उर्तिस्कुड़
Sunday especially, there'll be a special youth meeting.
कबर्ती आदिवारमु मनक प्रत्येकमयना यवनस्तुलकुड़कुन्तु
So kindly young people, gather others, inform others and try to be available.
कबर्ती यवनस्तुलेन वारु दैचेसी मीरु इतरल्लो कुड़ा समासरन तेलपंडि आइतंगा यवनस्तुल ई प्रत्येकुन यवनस्तुलकुड़कु हाजर्कान
So we'll pray and close.
तादन्तो मकिन्छुक
Now may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, love of God the Father, and the fellowship and communion of the Holy Spirit be with us both now and forevermore. Amen. So praise the Lord, God bless you.
दैचेसी वेली बोन्चेस्कुनी वेलालान कोर्कुत